Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marshan?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for a moment of silence, our invocation was not able to make it tonight. He got busy. So we'll do a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We hope all is well with Father Constantine. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Three as a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: clarification and regular council meetings of September 1, October 6, and October 20, 2022, and special clarification and special council meeting of September 14, 2022. B, Material Claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the period of October 16 through October 31, 2022. C, Human Relations Advisory Committee Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Shannon Nobbs-
Nowak.
Nowak Nika to continue serving on the Human Relations Advisory Committee. Shannon's term will begin November 2, 2022, and will expire November 2, 2026.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Cheetum?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of consent agenda items A, B, and C as presented in Agenda Item Number Three.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Cheetum and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Four as a Proclamation and Communications. We have a proclamation, and the proclamation tonight will be read by Council President Rick Cheetum.
A proclamation. Whereas the government of Pocatello, Idaho celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, 70% of consumers report this day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently owned retailers, and 66% of consumers report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas, 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and 54% reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or café on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas, Pocatello, Idaho supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, historic downtown Pocatello and Pocatello Chubbe Chamber of Commerce, as well as advocacy groups, public entities, and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And whereas, whether you choose to shop and dine in person, order a gift card online, pick up takeout or curbside, the locally owned and operated businesses in our community would love your support to keep your dollars local and help your neighbors have a bright holiday season. Now therefore, Brian Seblatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Pocatello, and encourage residents to shop small and support local, to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
I'll go ahead and give this. Stephanie was not able to be here either, so Jeff volunteered to come up and get that for our small businesses. And so Jeff, thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Jeff didn't have anything prepared to say, and so-
That's unusual.
We won't ask him to say anything.
He likes shopping.
He likes shopping. I don't think he even likes that. Thank you, Jeff. With that, on Agenda Item Five, we'll move to Agenda Item Five as our Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On November 10, City Council Work Session; November 17, 2:00 PM, Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting has been canceled. November 17 at 5:30 PM, a clarification meeting; 6:00 PM, a regular City Council Meeting; and on November 18 at 8:30 AM will be a City Council Goal Setting Meeting. On November 8, it's the Election Day. Please remember to go out and vote if you haven't voted already. On November 11 is Veterans Day. City offices will be closed for this holiday. Sanitation Department collections, collection trucks will remain on their regular schedule. November 11, Pocatello Historic Preservation Commission, HPC, is hosting an open house at Brady Chapel located in the Mountain View Cemetery from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. At the event, HPC members will provide tours and information about the nearly century-old structure. November 12 at 10:00 AM will be the Veterans Day Parade in historic downtown Pocatello and community events. On November 16, City Creek Recreation Area gates will be closed to motorized vehicles or motorized access. Upon approximately May 15, 2023, they will open. Let's see where I'm at. November 16 to 19 is the Festival of Trees at the Stevens Performing Arts Center. And as a reminder, the annual leaf collection continues through November 30. Leaves must be placed in a large paper compostable bag, not boxes or plastic bags. Place compostable leaf bags curbside by 7:00 AM on a regular collection day to be taken to the Bannock County Landfill Compost Site. We will move to Agenda Item Number Six, Appointment Confirmation of City Treasurer Gene Hill. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Gene Hill as city treasurer effective November 4, 2022. Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the appointment confirmation of Gene Hill as city treasurer effective November 4, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Marshan. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Seven, once I get organized. It's a public hearing, Zone Map Amendment Request, JG Ventures LLC. This time it's been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by John Burton Shaw of JG Ventures LLC, represented by Michael Jaglowski of Kenport Engineering LLC, for a contract zone map amendment to rezone an 8.75 acre parcel of land located on the 700, or in the 700 block of Hospital Way. The Residential Low RL Residential Commercial Professional, RCP, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request on October 12, 2022. Where's my thing? I declare the public hearing open. Somebody stole the mallet. Anyway, it's all right, I guess. Yes.
Yeah, Mayor, I will need to recuse myself from this particular agenda item. My company owns property just right next door adjacent to this. I've discussed it with the City of Pocatello Legal Department, and we think that's probably the best thing for me to do, so I won't be participating at all.
Okay, super. Thank you. That's probably the best thing. Thank you for that, Councilmember Nichols. With that then, let's see, I've declared the public hearing open. Council, has there been any expertise, communication, or contact in regards to this?
I received contact from an individual, but when I found out what it was about, then said that I couldn't discuss it with them, so we didn't actually talk about it.
Okay. Okay. Any others? Okay, super. Thank you, council. Then I would, we would look to Mike Jaglowski for a presentation. And as a reminder, there'll be 10 minutes, and I have been asked, and I needed to do this at the beginning of the meeting, council, there's been a concern that people cannot hear us, so when we're speaking, if you would please speak into the microphone. And then I would ask the speakers or the presenters to please also speak loud enough for the microphone to pick it up. Thank you.
Perfect. I, through experience, I just want to check this, make sure it works, and it looks like everything's going. Mayor, council, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and to discuss this item. Before I get started, I want to thank you for your dedication and service to the community, and it is good to see a full council. Thank you for that. My name is Mike Jaglowski. I'm with Kenport Engineering. I am representing JG Ventures. They are of both Idaho Falls and also Pocatello. I have John Burton Shaw here with me, will be co-presenting on that. Mostly will be, as questions and different things come up, it may be advantageous for Mr. Burton Shaw to answer those questions, and if so, then I'll direct the attention to him. Real quickly, I want to give some information, just some basic information about the site. And you may be familiar with it. It is a 13.13 acre site that is on Hospital Way. It is just east or across the street from Portnife Medical Center. And it is located just to the west, if you will, or downhill, from a residential subdivision on that. To the north, it's bound by office professional, commercial uses, and to the south is a bare ground that is also zoned residential low density on that. From the beginning of investigating this site and looking at it, the development team has really taken a strong interest in trying to understand exactly how the city comprehensive plan and the city ordinance works. We've convened and spoken with many people at City of Pocatello, in so much that it was advised to us for us to come up with a concept plan, an idea of how we want to develop that site, and present it to a, present it to a, to the staff Plan Review Committee for information and understanding of how, of how that works. From that meeting, we came up with a lot of different great ideas and was able to, to help move that forward. Through this, through this part, there was, I like to call them city guiding documents. I just wanted to touch base on that just a little bit. The comprehensive plan was an important document to us. In fact, as you know, developers, engineers, planners, and people that look to relocate usually draw themselves to the comprehensive plan and try to understand how the city works and where the city, you know, parents, fathers, mothers, where we want to see the, the city to go and how it could be planned. Probably the, the main item that we looked at is a future land use map, and on that future land use map, it designates this site as mixed use. And then it further explains in the comprehensive plan a little bit of how that mixed use should be used because it is bound by commercial, professional on the east side or across the street or in downhill from the site. And also to the north, it is bounded by that, but it's also bounded by residential uses and existing residential use to the, to the west or uphill of that site. Because of this, it's, it's also designates, designated as transitional, which means that it becomes up to the cleverness of the, of the developer and the planning and using those, using that document to be able to transition from commercial, which is to the west and lower, to residential above to the, to the east. Through these, these efforts, it was described to us very plenently that we need to take a half step back and recognize the Pocatello City Code that, that talks a lot more about contract rezoning or contract zoning agreements. And in this case, this is a, this is a rezone, but in that ordinance or in the, in the city code, it explains that we, as developers, need to recognize and understand and visit and talk with adjacent property owners. And luckily enough, I had a residential property owner contact me, and we started visiting and meeting. And from that, from those efforts, we were able to recognize different pieces and parts that are, that are of concern of the residential community that is to the east on that. I wanted to share some of those things. In the conversations that we had, we recognized that it makes sense for residential uses, all residential uses inside the RCP zone should try to be coupled and grouped towards residential uses to the east. They, we also looked at how density worked in that area, and we found that density ought to be looked at and reduced, if possible, to within that residential zone. We also looked at buffer zones and how much distance is between the existing residential uses and the new residential uses, and we decided that the best thing to do is to increase that buffer zone. And then also look at the height, and we, we looked at, and we decided, and we thought through, and we came up with that, the building height of the new residential zone ought to be looked at and also perhaps decreased. I'm going to pictorially just show you real quickly what we're talking about on here. In the pink or magenta area is the residential area that we're considering, or not considering, but through contract, we would place residential units in that area. It's a three-point acre site that, that bounds that, that east, that east area, or we're coupling it or grouping it with the other residential uses that is also further to the east. In that, in that area, we're also reducing the density by 20%, going from the RCP maximum of 30 units per acre, reducing it by 20%, bringing it down to 24 units per acre. The second part that we're looking at is, is creating more space between the residential use, the new residential use and the old residential use on there. We are, we're planning to double the buffer area, the buffer zone in that area to, to create more space and opportunity to have a little bit more distance between the two. Also, the last part of it is that we're, we're looking at reducing the building height. The RCP residential, commercial, professional zone looks at a maximum height of 45 feet, and what the developer's concession is looking, looking at is a 10% reduction on that. Now, there was a meeting on October 12 where Planning and, and Zoning Commission had, had made a condition for that to be decreased even further down to 38 feet. So that is something that is being considered. Okay, so the last part, this other picture here that we have is, is probably one of the items that, that I found to be of interest and of concern of the, of the residents, so we decided to put something together. But what we have is depicted in the pink or magenta zone, there is the actual depiction of how the residential zone would look as if it was on an elevational view on that. And then depicted, the actual heights of the, of the dwelling units or the multifamily dwelling units from the highest or the place that would be closest to the houses, which is further to the right, and then the new, the new parts would be further, further to the left on that. So I guess, John, is there anything that you'd want to add?
We're good.
Okay. So I'll just take a couple minutes or, I guess, 1 minute and 30 seconds to summarize. Thank you, Conny. From a summary point of view, from the beginning, we looked to the city. We looked to the city comprehensive plan. We looked to the ordinance. We looked at site plan review. We looked for the different opportunities that we had to be able to create this community. We recognize that this is a mixed-use community as designated by the comprehensive plan and that it is also transitional, which becomes a little tricky, but also becomes interesting in that as well. We also looked to the city ordinance, and we said, what is mixed use in comprehensive language actually say in zoning ordinance? And zoning ordinance says that when mixed use is mentioned in, in the comprehensive plan, that actually means RCP, which is what we're, we're asking to, to have this rezoned. The Planning and Zoning Commission, they said, whoa, let's take a step back and let's, let's see if we can engage the residents, engage the people that own land adjacent to that. We did such, and luckily, we had someone from that residence group come forward and, assemble a smaller group, and we met, and we looked, and we tried to understand exactly how we can do, and we made those things come to pass, which actually makes sense to us in that. And we just, I just got done talking about those four items. And from that, we'd like you to consider our application and-
Thank, thank you.
Okay.
With that, we would ask staff, or actually, Mike, I'm sorry, before you leave council, do you have any questions for Mike before he steps down, or we'll have him back up in a minute?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll ask when he comes.
Okay. Matt?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the city. As noted in the Agenda Item, John Burton Shaw of JG Ventures LLC, represented by Michael Jaglowski of Kenport Engineering LLC, has submitted a contract zone map amendment application requesting to rezone 8.75 acres plus or minus of a 13.13 acre parcel, parent parcel from residential low density to residential commercial professional. The request is consistent with the mixed-use designation of the comprehensive plan map in Municipal Code Section 17.01.130. The site is located adjacent to Hospital Way, east of the Portnife Medical Center and west of Sagewood Hills subdivision. A public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the evening of October 12 of 2022. In consideration of that, the application, the commission recommended approval of the contract zone map amendment with conditions as provided in their findings of fact. Per Code Section 17.03.300, the RCP zoning district is intended to accommodate a mix of residential, professional office, and neighborhood commercial uses, including business slash professional services, convenience, retail, personal services, and restaurants in close proximity of residential areas and major transportation facilities. Residential uses are permitted consistent with the residential high-density designation. Thus, multifamily apartments are permitted. The subject parcel meets both the purpose and the intent of the RCP zoning district. Just like to note, because it comes up on occasion, that hotels are not permitted in RCP. Code Section 17.02.170 outlines appropriate circumstances for the council to deem a zoning change through a contract zoning agreement rather than the traditional zoning map amendment, and that's what's being proposed before you tonight. All notification requirements have been met per state and municipal code requirements. Most written correspondence was received as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's review and public hearing, and all were provided as part of the city council's packet. Recent correspondence received by planning staff, planning staff, or the mayor's office has been provided to the council prior to this evening's meeting. As noted, a public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the evening of October 12, 2022. In consideration of the application, the commission recommends approval of the contract zone map amendment with the conditions as provided. In consideration of the application, staff concludes that the proposed contract zoning map amendment is compliant with Pocatello City Code Section 17.02.170, and as such recommends approval with the conditions as submitted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor, council, this concludes my presentation. If you have any answer, any questions?
Question with Councilwoman Lurick?
Yes. So, one statement on the, I mean, we heard from Mr. Jaglowski about the, sorry, I'm losing my words, the effort to make this project fit with our comp plan and what is intended in that. But on the petition, it states that this proposal is not supported by the Pocatello comp plan. In your presentation, you are saying that it is. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about how exactly this fits with our comp plan, and are we changing the comp plan or its intent in order, you know, to make this particular development work or this contract rezone work? Can you talk about that a little bit more?
Councilwoman Lurick, the, the, the property is already zoned mixed use or is designated mixed use under the comp plan. It has been such since at least 2015. Some research that I did on it showed that as far back as 2003, that the parcel, including where the hospital currently is, it was designated industrial slash office park, which I think was a carryover from like the AMI area and that area from Alvin Ricken. When we, when we did the rewrite on, on the comprehensive plan back in 2015, that was recognized, and that parcel was brought in, into the current mixed use. So under, under the, under mixed use, and then when you look at Municipal Code Section 17.01.130, those, those, those meet one another. So the RCP is your mixed-use designation under our code.
Other questions for Matt while he's there? Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt, what are the advantages for the developer of the change from the way it's currently zoned to what's proposed?
Well, the, most of the uses are, would not be permitted under residential low density. You could certainly-
But you said it was mixed use.
Well, right, so, but under the current zoning, if I understand, your question was under the current zoning without a change. If it was not changed, it would just be residential, and any uses mixed use, i.e. professional office, some limited commercial, multifamily, that type of use would not be permitted without a rezoning. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Marshan?
So the way it's zoned right now, they couldn't build the, the 24-
That's correct.
Every, it would just be for residences?
Just residential. Single family could build townhomes. Minimum per unit for a townhome would be 6,000 square feet or 12,000 square feet for the townhomes. The same is true for single family.
And that's how it's zoned now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But just to clarify, because I understood what Rick understood too, so the intent in the comp plan is that that area is supposed to be mixed use?
Yes. It, it aligns with the requests as before you.
Okay.
And in a land use point of view, that transition is, would be that from that mixed use, from the residential to the mixed use.
So the comp plan says mixed use, but the zoning has never been modified to reflect that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask one other question, just to get a little more information or your thoughts on this. So Mr. Jaglowski presented what they had done to create a buffer zone or buffer area, and I was wondering your thoughts on that. Do you feel that that is-
Yeah.
Efficient or?
Yeah, yeah, I do, because if it was just zoned outright residential or RCP, then under the code, the minimum buffer that's required between the residential zoning and RCP is only 10 feet. They're, they're proposing 20 feet, and that is also a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if you look in, in the condition, it breaks it out into pretty significant, like, here's your buffer, here's how many trees, that type of thing in there, so.
So we're, the zoning here, to Mr. Marchand's, Marchand's question, so the zoning here, was this investigated prior to? Or we just bought the property and then we're just expecting to rezon down the road? Or we investigated, we see that it's RCP, and then later on, like, what, what was the intent?
Well, and again, in a planning, in the planning point of view, land use, that transition, and you have it all through this town, where you have RCP and then you'll have residential, Clark and Center Street, for example, there's numerous other ones. But that transition, especially when you look at the parcel and then how it's been developed to, you know, to the west and so forth, that's why, you know, at least since, again, since 2015, at least, it's been mixed use. Before, it is actually potentially more intense, land use from industrial to office park. So in, in my professional opinion, this is probably a better transition than that could have been.
Any other questions for Matt? Okay, and Matt, you mentioned the correspondence that you've received. Everybody's received a copy of the letters and the emails-
I believe so.
-in your office. Madam Clerk, have we received any in your office that we have not seen?
You've received everything that we've received in our office.
Okay, super. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman.
Then with that, I would look for any testimony supporting the application.
That was okay, am I right?
Yes, please. There is a big to-do about whether or not, I didn't know he was going to jump up first. I would have just had to take it with you, but.
Okay. Good evening, council members and mayor. Dennis Adamson, 500 Barrett. I'm here tonight speaking in favor of this application. I'm really coming to you tonight as a fellow housing provider in Pocatello. We provide housing to over 2,000 households in the Pocatello area, and there's a major shortage in what our, the citizens and our fellow community members need and what we have right now in Pocatello. Even with the problems with interest rates and things like that that we're running up against, there's just not enough housing for the people who want to live in this wonderful community. And so I'm here to speak in favor of, of this transition plan for this space. I think it, it's really exciting. This ground has been vacant and unused for many, many years. I've lived here for most of my life, so 30-plus years, I've seen that hillside across from, what is it, Portnif, or, excuse me, Pocatello Medical Center back in the day, and it's been that way for a long time. It's exciting to see something happen with it. And for, for the people that live between a very commercial, busy hospital and a quiet residential neighborhood, it's nice to meet the transitional needs of the comp plan and to get it into something that can transition and be a better buffer for that neighborhood and for those residences up there. As has been talked about a lot, the comp plan clearly marks this space as a transitional space, and it's my understanding that that purpose is to adjust the zoning to allow for that transition, so it can be used and it can create a transition from an active, very busy hospital to the residences that sit up on top of the hill. I feel like this plan accomplishes that. Most importantly, it accomplishes it by providing more housing to the people of Pocatello. I think there's been a lot of concessions have been made by the developer, but even without those concessions, it seems like it's evident that the city should follow the guiding documents, follow the recommendations of the professional staff, and approve this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any others supporting the application? If, when you get up here, if you'd go ahead and fill the thing out, that'd be great.
So if I say ditto, do I get three more minutes or do I gotta sit down?
Nice try. But you don't have to say the same thing he just said.
My name's Scott Keller. I live at 2476 Satterfield. I have been here since 1979, and this is not the Pocatello, Idaho that I came to. We have changed, we have grown, we have expanded, and I just think that's, it's wonderful. Having been here, I've educated in Pocatello, at, my degree from Idaho State University, been here a long time and seen the growth of even, even that. Things grow, our hospitals grow. One of our biggest employers is professional people, and I, the way I understand this, this has some professional complexes along with some, some residential. Having been in real estate in Pocatello for over 20 years, I get asked all the time, like, hey, what do you got for, you know, apartments or places that we can send some of our professionals to, to stay at? And so many times, the, the reason people don't come here is because we don't have places for them to live, we don't have places for them to stay, and they want to be close to where they work, or they want to, you know, be able to get where they need to quickly. Having seen some of what J&amp;G Ventures has done, I, I think they've gone above and beyond what they've been asked to do and made something that's going to be very attractive when people pull into Pocatello and come up to our hospitals and come over by our schools and, and see something instead of, you know, just a mountainside that, that is a gap. We have a gap here, for sure. In my opinion, I think that if I were a landholder and, and I owned that property, I would certainly want to be able to do what would, would make sense and capitalize on that. That said, owning all my own home, I, I think that if someone were to build something in my backyard, I might, you know, that, that would make me feel like I, I really enjoyed what I've had here for so many years. However, Pocatello is not the same Pocatello, and it won't be the same Pocatello in 2029. We're going to continue to grow, and we need your help to do that. I think this company has brought to you a plan. They've, they've checked their boxes, they've dot their i's, and I would be in for, in favor of you approving the zone change for this company and to see more housing and more office space for us to utilize in this great community. So thank you.
Thank you. Any others supporting the application? Okay, we've got a couple. So why don't we line up?
You go.
Because we've got a couple. So if you would go ahead and just fill your name out and hand it back, and then you can fill your name out and then hand it across the way there. Looks like he's ready to speak to after you are, so.
Mayor, council, thank you for your time. My name is Ryan Bowen. Just got two quick points, so I want to kind of drill down as to why I'm in favor of JG Ventures propositions. First off, the, the development is in the healthcare mecca of Pocatello. It's kind of a given, granted the location, the name of Hospital Way, the availability of future medical office space that affords proximity to the hospital. It'll attract healthcare providers from the greater southeast Idaho area to either relocate and/or expand their clinical office spaces. PMC is a regional hospital offering a wide array of medical services. The community's best interest is at heart because healthcare services can be achieved within a tighter radius of the new development. And just from Center Street to Terry Street, it's just under a mile. I like to call it the medical mile. There is a lot of healthcare providers just down that street, and their essential services, they're greatly appreciated, and what better way for the city of Pocatello to pay it forward than by mitigating a land development hurdle? My second point is to address the city comprehensive plan. So in chapter four of the plan, objective 3.2, it states, which allows for and encourage the development of a variety of retail and service businesses that are pleasant places for people to shop, work, walk, and congregate, specifically aligns JG Ventures' development goals with the city of Pocatello. As a medical mile has been and continues to be economically developed, it only reinforces the fact that the, the 8.75 plus or minus parcel lot be rezoned to RCP, which would also, in addition to solve a bit of a housing crisis that we've got going on here. So thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you didn't hand that?
We did, came back.
Let's bring it coming back already, man. You guys are on top of it. Okay.
My name's Tanner Stenquist. I live at 472 Pheasant Ridge Drive. I currently do project management for developers here in the Pocatello area other than JG Ventures. I currently understand the need for housing in Pocatello. It's a great place, place to live, and people are moving here from out of state looking for job, well, they already have jobs and need places to live. An example of that is that my wife does work at the hospital just right across the street from this proposed parcel, and she's spoken with many employees who are either travel nurses or come here for short-term visits and don't have places in close proximity to the hospital to stay. I'm in favor of this because I think it's a great transition from the residential homes that are set to the east to transition right into that beautiful medical complex that has already been established for multiple years. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Isley. I live at 477 La Valle Estrada, which is Hospital Way as it goes north. It's right there at the light. I've just got four quick points. One, I am a neighbor and I develop in the area. I've lived in the area for 20 years. Two, we're blessed in that area with a really underutilized ramp to the freeway. The I-15 ramp at Center Street, Center Street is a five-lane road all the way up to Hospital Way, and that ramp is really underutilized, and so it, it allows traffic to move real easily in the area. And at the intersection of Center Street and Hospital Way is, it's already controlled by a light. There's the traffic light there, and that's where the majority of the traffic will, I think, will go in that direction. It'll be easily handled. You were questioning or wondering about the history. That was all owned at one time by Beverly Beislein. She owned the chunk that included where they built the hospital, where Hospital Way was built. I don't know if she sold that to the city or gave it to them, and then that piece on up, and it was all one piece. So the original owner of the land would have anticipated, and that's why she kept it and didn't sell it to the hospital, because the hospital had built, then she had put, sell it for medical offices right adjoining to it. So that was the original. That also, you can look at it this way, is that that was the intent also of the people who developed Sagewood Hills, because Sagewood Hills, the residential development to the east, has no direct access through this area. Center Street comes down and the other one, and I always forget the name of it, but Birdie Thompson comes down, and there's probably a mile between those two. And none of those residential streets in Sagewood Hills come down directly to Hospital Way. None of them do. And so there was never any intent to bring houses or residential down into this piece of property. My only thing that I was wondering, they probably talked about it, but some of that housing is going to be multifamily. It's close to the university, and I've gone through this myself down the street, and I surely think a nice fence along the back separating the residents from this development would certainly be in order and might have the neighbors there look at it better. They've done a good job of buffering and lowering the heights, which would be legitimate concerns also. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd look for any others supporting the application. Okay, any un, oh, you're, you gotta move quicker than that.
Sorry about that. John Burton Shaw, the developer. I just mostly wanted to answer your question. You asked, you know, how, how do you go about, you know, buying this, this property and then trying to rezon it? And if you'll indulge me for about two minutes, the, the way it comes about is I, I look at the property and then I go to the city. I say, what does the city want done with this property? And the way you tell what the city wants done with their property is you look at the city's comprehensive plan and-
So, John, I'm going to stop you real quick right there. You're going to have an opportunity after all of the public hearing or after the comments to come back up and answer the questions from the, the council.
Fantastic.
So I'll, I'll make sure that you get called back up here.
Thank you.
All right, yep. Any others in support of the application? I mean, I can appreciate you're in support of it. Okay, any uncommitted to the application? Okay, any opposed to the application? Now, I do have a few that have signed up on this sheet that was over on the table here. If you would, why don't we just start with Cliff Olson? Okay, so what I, I guess what I'm asking is whoever goes first, we've got a couple, if you'd sign the sheet and then, let's make a line so that we're not, and then, and pass it back, the signup sheet so that we're not-
So we can expedite?
Yeah, we can expedite this.
I have standouts.
Okay, if you'd hand them to me. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Stephen Balkenbush, and I live at 719 Bitterroot, which is just adjoining the property to the east. The images that I passed out are just to kind of illustrate the points that I want to make, and I realize this was already submitted as a letter, but I wanted to just reiterate. During the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on October 12th, there were two motions made at the end of the meeting that were very similar but slightly different, and the first motion that was made, as you can see in figure one, was adding an additional condition to the contract rezon that limiting the multifamily units immediately adjacent to the Sagewood Hills subdivision be limited to 12 units per acre rather than the proposed 24 units per acre. And then the second motion was that the entire residential area be limited to that 12 units per acre. And as you can see from the table, that four out of the seven people voted for either one of the motions, and so I just wanted to ask you to consider, if you do approve this, that maybe you consider limiting that immediately adjoining to 12 units per acre. We just, we as residents feel that that is more of a blend and more of a transition than going from four units per acre to 24 units per acre, right next to each other. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? And who has the signup sheet? Because I have at least four more names on here that, oh, it's still- Oh, it's still there. Yeah, they're all for, they're all for the public hearing. So yeah, if we could just do that, it'd just make it quicker. Thank you.
My name's Cliff Olson, 735 Bitterroot Drive. I've lived in Pocatello for 44 years and in Sagewood Hills on Bitterroot Drive for 34 years. I hope that you had a chance to read our comments to the JGV submittal, starting on page 57 of the 157-page PDF for tonight's meeting. There's a lot of details there, a lot of comments there. I'm gonna rush, I have to rush through this because I only have three minutes. My comments are about the 8.75 acres to the south that's owned by JGV and it's currently zoned residential low density. As directed by the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 13th, we tried to negotiate with JG Ventures. Personally, I was very uncomfortable trying to talk to JGV without the involvement of the city, but that's the position we were put in. We negotiated a set of restrictions on the land to be rezoned that was given to us by JGV in writing on August 10th. As we have said in our comments on page 74 of that PDF, there were things we agreed on and many things we didn't. Note however, that those agreed upon items were never put in JGV's resubmittal to the city to be put in the rezoning contract as they promised to do so. We feel that we got burned here. I'm not sure there's much we can do about it that if you don't act to enforce what JGV already agreed to. Again, go to see page 74. Regardless, at this point, all we are asking is for a density limits on the east half of the land that's going to be residential. JGV disingenuously characterizes their 24 dwelling units per acre as a 20% reduction. However, this is actually a 600% increase from the existing four density for residential low density. And again, the land is still zoned residential low density. We would agree with a compromise to increase the density by a factor of 200% to 300% to either eight or 12 units, dwelling units per acre, but not any more than that. We are asking for your ruling on that limitation and then we can all move forward. I also note that existing zoning law is guidance is cited in the comprehensive plan and should not override what, what zoning changes request do not automatically necessitate approval by the city. As quoted from page Roman numeral 8 of the zoning of the comprehensive plan, failure to accomplish any goal or objective of the policy in the comprehensive plan does not give rise to legal rights against the city. The details of that quote are again in my comments that, our comments that have been made, starting on page, uh, 74, I believe it was, or page 57, excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, opposed.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, thank you for allowing me the time tonight and thank you for your service to the city of Pocatello. Section five of the comprehensive...
Could you give us your name for people watching?
I'm sorry, Vivian Goodner. I live at 865 Bitterroot Drive. Section five of the comprehensive plan states, describe if the proposed zoning district would be compatible in terms of their scale, mass, coverage, density, and intensity with the adjacent land uses. In terms of scale and mass, the building plans shown to the residents contain 18 apartments in each building and literally dwarf the adjacent single-family units. Clearly not compatible. Similarly, the lot coverage or footprint of the apartment buildings and parking lots is far higher than the single-family homes. Not compatible. The difference in density and intensity between the proposed multifamily development and the adjoining single-family community is in no way compatible. The apartments at 24 units per acre are six times the density of the existing homes. How could anyone conclude the apartment portion of this proposal is compatible based on any of these criteria? We respectfully request that you honor our long-term investment in our community and condition this rezon not to exceed 12 units per acre in the rezon area adjoining our single-family community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next. Opposed.
I also have some figures. Would you accept?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. I'll just one more second. Okay. Uh, my name is Therese Balkenbush. Um, I live at 719 Bitterroot Drive. Prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on October 12th, I spent quite a bit of time reviewing the city's zoning map, looking for any instance where high-density zoned land or RCP zoned land bordered residential low-density zoning. I further looked to see if there were any high-density apartments adjoining single-family homes. And I found no examples of this juxtaposition of housing types. So we neighbors have been referred to several times as NIMBYs, which means not in my backyard. And, um, I don't see this as an accurate representation of our concerns because this doesn't happen in anyone's backyard in Pocatello. Anyone in a single-family home. So I brought this point up during the Planning and Zoning Commissioners' meeting on October 12th. The details of my review can be found in a letter to the commission dated October 12th. I was told you would receive all of that correspondence. But afterward, after I made this point, during discussion by the commission members, Commissioner Phillips stated that high-density apartments just down the road at the quarter of Birdie Thompson and Hospital Way were bordering single-family homes. So I've shown you in figure one that that's in fact a duplex bordering those high-density apartments. So that statement was incorrect. But the other commissioners listened and I fear that that may have affected voting. If it was accepted as true, I think that's a compelling argument for, for apartments. So I would just wanted to make sure that if you viewed the recording of that commissioner meeting, that you know that statement was incorrect. Um, and then in figure two, I just wanted to show you that Birdie Thompson is in fact a really great example of a transition among housing types from apartments to duplexes in purple, like the, almost the length of Birdie Thompson, and then single-family homes on entirely separate streets looping off from Birdie Thompson and intersecting Birdie Thompson. So just to summarize, uh, within the city, I could find no example of apartments built on either residential high-density zoned land or RCP zoned land bordering single-family homes on residential low-density with single-family homes. Uh, I hate for us to be the first example of this juxtaposition of different densities. And so we are asking just for the limit to 12 units per acre. And I just also wanted to, um, voice a concern that voting on motions.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Sorry, have you signed up? Have you already signed up?
Yep. Uh, my name's Wallace Kennedy. I live at 801 Bitterroot Drive, uh, directly adjoining the property in question. The, the neighboring residents just definitely do not agree that three-point acres of multifamily blends with our residential low-density or high-density, excuse me. Or low-density, yeah. The proposed density of 24 units per acre is six times the density of the adjoining community, which is Sagewood Hills, and wholly incompatible with the adjoining single-family residential. That's virtually 10 times the density, the number of units. And it just doesn't blend with the surrounding property. Section two of the app and the code states that, describe how the list of uses permitted by the zoning ordinance would blend with the surrounding uses. And the residents do not agree that it blends at all. Also, the height, which is 38 and a half square feet or feet high, is about 15 feet higher than the adjoining residences. And that's quite a difference. I mean, it just totally blocks everything. Also, the, the vehicles, uh, assuming like one and a half units or vehicles per apartment, 108 apartment units equals 162 vehicles, for which parking has to be provided. And 162 cars coming and going is going to be quite disruptive to the neighborhood of Sagewood Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Hi, my name's Joy Kennedy. I live at 801 Bitterroot Drive. Haven't attended these zoning meetings and listening to everybody. I, what I haven't heard is residents haven't had the opportunity to say, it's not that we're against medical offices and development and progress. If that's okay, we know Pocatello needs that. I like the medical mile thing. I hope they use that in marketing. But anyway, what I hear everybody saying is to reduce the impact that having a bunch of apartments right up against us has. And you, and you have this contract rezon. And that's an opportunity for you guys to step in and help reduce the impact of having a high-density apartments up against our homes. And that's what we're really asking you to do. Whether it's creative thinking or just reduced density, however it's done, it can be done. And we hope that you step up and help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Any others opposed to the application?
My name's Brady Moon. I live at 763 Bitterroot Drive. I was one of the people that was meeting with Mike and, um, I would just like to, we're not really arguing the RCP along Hospital Way. So let's kind of focus on the east side residential that we're all talking about, the 12 units. A question that keeps coming up is on mixed, on mixed use in the city plan. And our proposal of the 12 units of the medium density actually fulfills the city's plan that they envisioned. Look at the term mixed use. The city's plan says reasonably transitioned and it uses the word blend in the city plan. And so we believe that 12 units per acre is more of a blending than the 24 units. And it still fulfills the city's plan. So, um, I would like you, or maybe I'll suggest that maybe you ask that question to the staff if changing it to 12 units per acre, if that fulfills the, the city's comprehensive plan, because it does. And then I'd just like you, to ask you a question and maybe just think in your heads, is it a reasonable transition to have 24 units right in your backyard? Especially when it's not something that's been done? Um, we're, we're in danger of setting new precedences. We've all, I guess, get kind of emotional because it's, it's not that we want to stop development. It's that when you do four acres at 12 units per acre, that's 48 units. Now to the north, he can already put 30 units. So he, even with what we're suggesting, that's 78, 80 units there. It's not like we're trying to say no to anything. Like, that's still a good amount of density. So like it's been said before, I'd just like to have you put yourselves in our shoes. And also, I think the, like, we understand trying to look for the future and have that vision. And we want to support that. That's why we're not saying, don't build anything there. Cause I also think it's important that you take into account the residents and the current residents and our, so there's a blending of the two. So that's all we're asking for. And we appreciate your time and you guys have a good night.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application?
Thank you very much, esteemed council members, for allowing us all to tell you our story. I want you, my name's Kathy Olson. I live at 735 Bitterroot. I've lived there for 40, 35 years. Imagine for a moment that you are a nurse or a medical professional coming to work at our hospital. Or imagine, because you heard the developers say that they want to build housing for medical professionals. They want to build housing for travelers. If that's what they're looking at, that high density. They're wanting to look for temporary medical professionals coming to our community. Because you know, no doctor and nurse is going to want to live in a 30 or 24-unit apartment building up the hill from the hospital. I'm asking you just to think of, I understand we need the, the development, but if the development is to meet the needs of the hospital, they are only looking for temporary workers to live in that situation. There's no permanent housing in, um, in their situation here. So we've submitted multiple petitions. It's not just those of us who are right here on the border. Many Pocatelloans are concerned with the wild growth that does not blend with their neighborhoods as evidenced by the petitions with over 190 signatures. We are not asking for stopping progress or development. We are only asking that there's a reasonable transition in 3.8 acres. How will you represent us who signed the petitions, the long-term members of your community, the taxpayers and the volunteers of your community? Are you going to represent instead travelers who want to come to our community for a few short, um, times to work at the hospital? Or are you going to represent good, solid development for our community? Thank you so much for listening to us. It's a difficult topic and we really appreciate you.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then we would look at the applicant for rebuttal. And John, this would be when you would want to speak now.
Thank you, mayor and, uh, city council. To use Kathy's language, imagine for a moment you're a certified nursing assistant and you're a single mom. Or you're a cafeteria worker at the hospital or a certified medical assistant or part of the janitorial staff. And you live in downtown Pocatello and you have to drive every day after you drop your kids off to school to go work at Port Duff Medical Center. Ms. Olson represents that this is just for physicians and nurses. I, I didn't represent that at all. Those are her words. Those aren't my words. Although I have had several emergency room doctors that have said that they would love to have an apartment there because they have to be within 20 minutes of the hospital and they could have walkability to the hospital. What we're talking about is walkability to the hospital complex, not just for doctors. Cause I agree, I don't think a physician is probably going to live in that apartment. But there are several other cohorts that... to drive every day, hospitalway would be not quite as congested. In answer to your question, Mr. Mingam, when I looked at this property, the first thing I do is I look at the comprehensive plan. And it's along the lines of, what does the city want? And I look at it, and the city's comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 2017, which becomes the guiding documents of the city, is we want a transitional zone to hospitalway or to Portonoff Hospital. And we go, and I went and I talked to P&amp;Z, and they said, yes, we would love for you to come do what you're talking about. Okay? That's how this comes about. This isn't really my plan. This is the city's plan that I'm trying to accommodate. And so we went to a P&amp;Z meeting, and there was quite a bit of opposition. And it came up that, okay, maybe we should try to do a contract rezone. In spite of me thinking that we shouldn't, we should just go through the RCP, which is the zone that the city has recommended, we went back and had some conversation with the residents. And although we didn't get on the same page, we agreed to some things. We had some concessions. We doubled the buffer zone, doubled it. We went from 45 feet in height down to 38. We didn't even get any increase in height. Because right now, in single-family, we can do 38 or 38 and 1/2. Okay? We went from 30 doors per acre down to 24. If I was the residents up there, and I was the ones that lived in these north, in those houses up there, that's already RCP, that can go 45 doors, 45 feet and 30 doors per acre without the 20-foot buffer zone, I think those guys' ones should be supporting us because if we can't do it there, then it's got to be somewhere. We have changed the whole dialogue in the last meeting from all these concessions to, well, now just do 12. Just do 12 doors per acre. And the frustrating part is, you know, if you answer the question, why can't you just do 12? Let's go back to what we've already conceded. We've conceded the buffer zone. We've doubled it. We've dropped the height from 45 to 38 feet, 38 and 1/2 feet. We've dropped the density from 30 to 24. Now they want to halve that again to 12. I think the response is, I don't think they will be happy with anything until they get it to the point where you actually can't develop it. And the topography there is such that if you're doing 12 doors per acre, I'm not sure that you can even develop it, which I think would be the win. I think that's the real win, is that you create so many restrictions on this property through a contract-free zone, which we have generally tried to put our best foot forward, and have made some enormous concessions. But I think the only concession that will make people happy is if we get it to the point where you just can't develop it. And that's the dialogue that's happened today. This is completely different than the dialogue that we had three weeks ago with P&amp;Z. Now it's all about, forget 24, let's make it 12. Keep in mind, you know, I hear over and over again that, you know, in our neighborhood, I don't know why they say that. It's not in their neighborhood. It's along hospitalway. There are no connectors to that neighborhood at all. This is the medical mile. It's not in the neighborhood. And it drops as it goes from east to west. I hear things from Mr. Olson that if we can just do 12, then we can move forward. Because Mr. Olson gets to make the decision, right? Kathy says yes. So that's frustrating to me.
So, John, I'm going to ask you, talk to us.
I apologize.
Not there.
Yes, I apologize. And so those are the frustrations. We come to the city, we look at the comprehensive plan. We didn't adopt this plan. These aren't our guiding documents. It's the city's guiding documents. So we go, and we put forth what the city has asked for, and we get opposition. In other cities, it's not even us, it's the applicant. Sometimes it's the city that's the applicant. But we go back, and we try to appease the residents. We try to make a lot of concessions. And I just don't think, it doesn't matter what we do, that the only concession is going to be if we get the density so low that you just can't do the project at all. The whole idea here is to create walkability along this medical mile to Portonoff Hospital. It was the city's plan. It still is the city's plan. We're here supporting the city's plan. When the city comes together and they make a comprehensive plan, they do it for the benefit of the city. They don't do it to the benefit of a specific five or six houses that might be affected, of which we've made enormous concessions to not affect them. And that's it. Unless you have questions.
There may be some questions, but with all due respect, I did not hear anybody say no development. I did hear possible reduction. And so I just want to clarify, I did not hear anybody say no development.
I appreciate you say that, saying that, Mayor. It wasn't said directly, it's implied. If you get density down to such a level that you can't develop it, then there is no development.
I totally understand that. I understand that piece, but I just want, I just want to make sure you understand. I did not hear that.
I appreciate you saying that.
I appreciate where you're coming from as well.
It's implied. And when statements are said that we're not going from 30 to 24 to 12, we're going from 4 to 12, that's disingenuous as well. The city does not have a plan for a single family. It's zoned that way right now, but that is not the plan of the city. The plan of the city is not to have residential, single-family across from the hospital. There's not a hospital in the country that doesn't have multifamily for staff workers to work and to develop and grow that hospital. It would be completely out of place and context with where the hospital's at to have single family there.
So I would be remiss if I didn't say that I did hear Matt also say that that was the intent of the comprehensive plan to start with. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I appreciate that. I'm mostly speaking to the residents, I suppose.
Counsel, any questions for John Royce?
I have a question. I have a couple. When I look at these units that are set up there, each one of those house 24 apartments? Is that right?
All this is, is a schematic of what something might look like to give a general idea of what that 3.8 acres.
So my question is, as we talk about transition, and I also haven't heard anybody say they don't want development. And I applaud you for doing what you're doing, but I also understand what's going on when this goes up in your backyard. And I get it when you say it's not their neighborhood. It isn't their neighborhood. It's their backyard for some of them. So when I look at that, and we talk about transition, and they talk about 12, what would happen? And if the one, the buildings in the back were 12, and the buildings in the front then became 24? So you had a transition going from 12, now you're going to 24, now you're coming out to commercial.
What would happen?
Well, is that something that's reasonable? Because ultimately, in my mind, I'm looking at it from your end, and it's money. The more units I have, the more money I make. Correct?
I think the answer is nothing happens. You don't get the development.
You don't get the development.
When we bought this, and we talked to P&amp;Z, and they said RCP is the zone, in our head, we planned this for 30 doors per acre. The topography up there is such, it's not a flat piece of ground. There's enormous expense that's going to come into play to try to recontour this, to actually even put these buildings there. And so I might agree, if you had a flat piece of ground, that maybe you could start with 12. We're not starting with 30.
Right.
We're starting with 24, right? If you start with 12, I don't think you have a development.
Okay. Well, I just, I look at that, the other thing is, is, you know, from my end, when I look at it, and I understand it, believe me, you don't control who moves in there, right? And it can be an issue. I appreciate the bigger buffer zone, but is there anything else going to go? Are you going to build the fences? Are going to be some type of compound around it to keep noise down?
Yeah, I think the city, I mean, keep in mind, there's, from where those houses sit to where it drops a good, I don't know what the number is, 15, 20 feet? When you submit your plot, I think there are designations for trees and fences and things of that nature. I don't know what those are exactly off the top of my head, but there are provisions for that in the city plan.
So you bring up a good point, because there is a drop-off there, right? In between the housing that's currently there and then the plot that you have here. So what would be the distance in between from where the drop-off is, you know, from where you're going to start to where their houses start? What would be that?
Yeah, so the, most of those, the property lines of those houses kind of start on that downslope, right? And so it'd be 20 feet from the property line towards the east.
Next question.
Oh, sorry, towards the west. I apologize.
So we have on the back end there, we have residential use. Then we have residential, commercial, and professional use. Now, someone had stated that traffic wouldn't really be increased there, it would probably decrease traffic, but if we have residential, commercial, and professional right up against hospitalway, I tend to think that there's going to be more traffic coming into those professional or commercial properties or buildings, correct? So are we looking at possibly widening the road? Is there anything, any thoughts for that? And the parking and things of that nature?
So the statement was made, you know, it was maybe more of a rebuttal of it's going to cause all this increase in traffic, right? And my rebuttal was, is it? Or could it actually maybe cause a decrease if you have a lot of these hospital workers who can now walk to Portonoff Hospital? But let's assume, for the sake of argument, that it does. At the last meeting, I believe one of the city planners came up and made the statement that the roads are already, will already accommodate any increase in traffic.
Okay.
I think my questions are more for staff, if I can ask.
All right. I do have one question that came up, and maybe, John, you may or may not be able to answer this. Mike, you may be the one that I need to. Do you by chance know the elevation difference from where the residential homes are and the, I would say, the backyard of the residences there?
The height difference?
The height difference. What is our elevation?
From, Mike, maybe, actually, that's better, but this is the view that would show that, I think is what you're trying to see. This would be...
I looked, I was looking at that, but I'm wondering, okay, so you've reduced the height from 40, from 38 feet to 35, 30?
45.
45 to 38. Okay, you reduced it from 45 to 38. I'm just trying to make a visual of, okay, I walk out in my backyard right now, and I don't see anything because it's just an open field. I walk out in my backyard now, and I see these apartments. Am I seeing it like a house, a regular house height? Or am I seeing it higher than a house height would be? Or am I seeing it lower than a house height? Does that make any sense?
Yes. So the current zone in multifamily right now, as it sits, is 38 and 1/2 feet.
I understand that.
We're getting no, we're getting no advantage. The reason why the residents say that it's higher than what they would like, I believe, is because I think part of their HOA stipulates that they have a lower roof elevation. Well, that's their own HOA. That has nothing to do with the city of Pocatello.
Sure. No, I understand that. So, okay. Thank you. And just so you, by the way, I actually do live in this kind of a situation, but it's reversed. My house is below the apartments, and there's about 300 of them behind me in my house. And so, and it's, quite frankly, it has not ever been a problem in my neighborhood, for us. But that being said, I understand it. It was there when I bought the house, so. We have a few questions first.
And when you say it was there when you bought the house, keep in mind, this was an industrial zone.
I understand.
When most of these bought their house.
Yeah. Okay. That being said, I think we have a question for staff.
I guess one of my questions might be for you. I don't know. I'll ask it, and we'll see. But you mentioned about the road being wide enough to deal with traffic, and that people might be able to now walk to work. I travel that road fairly frequently to visit doctors' offices up there, but it's, I don't recall sidewalks that it's particularly walker-friendly. Is that going to be added, like in front of your? I know part of that would be city, but part of it would be your development?
Yeah, the cities, I think, would require that, as far as a sidewalk along hospitalway, just like the hospital house on the opposite side.
I think there's a sidewalk on the hospital side of the road.
Yeah, on, yeah, some of it there is. The other side is a little...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that it's defined, but, you know, I imagine some sort of crosswalk where they walk across from the development to the hospital complex.
And so that will be in front of your development there? Good.
Okay. Any other questions for John? It sounds like we have one for staff. Okay? Matt?
Mayor and Council, Matthew Lewis, senior planner.
I was wondering about the comment about juxtaposition of housing types, high-density apartments next to single-family homes, and that we don't have that anywhere else in the city. Is that the case? Because it seems like we do.
That's not true. You know, in the commercial areas, you can have residential in upper stories outright, provided you have commercial on the ground floor. Most of the, most of the high-density, and it may be true without doing like an entire huge analysis, but a lot of the developments that you see here in Pocatello are more like the fourplexes. You have a lot of those that are going on out in Philbin area and so forth. We recently had one, that was before the council, where they were considering, you know, a big one, you have Northgate, which has 412 units. Sure, there's, you know, pretty much that's what's there now, but as you go further to the north and east, that's all zoned commercial, general. And this is also zoned RCP, as far as just the Northgate area. So when you talk about transition, probably the most intense transition that I can think of where you have is the Ellison Corridor. I mean, you have basically from Oak all the way down on either side of the road, you have commercial, and then you have residential RMS that is right about in that. And that is much more intense in terms of a transition. One thing I would like to note, because it is kind of mentioned, in addition to the planning of the landscape buffer, the code does require a subscaring fence or wall of at least six feet in height. So that's in addition to. So that answered your question.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Before you leave, Matt, do we have any other questions for Matt?
I'm not sure if my questions matter for Merrill. I'm just curious if this development will require a highway user study.
I'll have Merrill answer that. You're talking about like a traffic analysis?
Yes.
Counsel, Merrill Quaid, public works engineer for the city of Pocatello. To answer the question, the rezone won't trigger that. However, when they start to build and they bring in their plan, as was stated, if the peak hours travel is 100, peak hour trips, that will trigger in our code a full traffic study. If it doesn't, and it's under that, we ask for kind of an evaluation to be done and where traffic is going to be going in that. This one is kind of unique, that, as is stated, hospitalway is a minor arterial. It has a signal at the one end. It was put in for the hospital, for the traffic in the turn lane. And this road, as far as it was asked about widening or anything, the way this is set up with the turn lane, widened up for the turn lane in the middle, so it'd be three lanes, it would handle the traffic. And even though 100 and whatever it was, 162 vehicles seems like a lot, when you do the analysis and when you run the numbers, it's not, it's not that much. So...
Thank you.
So Merrill, let's talk about...
And this, this road, as far as it was asked about widening or anything, the way this is set up with the turn lane, widen up for the turn lane in the middle, so it'd be three lanes, it would handle the traffic. And even though 100 and whatever it was, 162 vehicles, seems like a lot, when you do the analysis and when you run the numbers, it's not, it's not that much. So.
Thank you. So Merrill, let's talk about, because it's a hospital. So let's talk about ambulance and fire trucks and whatnot coming through here. Do we have any impeded flow of traffic for them during construction, after construction, once the thing is finalized?
Okay, during construction, they'll have to keep the road open. Everything will be there. There may be some sewer water hookups that would have to be planned ahead. Full traffic would have to continue at the hospital and that. Down at Hospital Way in center, when we put the signal in, in the city, and we worked with an adjacent developer too, to work, put the signal in, there's a free running right, well, more like, almost a free running right, that to get onto Hospital Way for, for those purposes. There is some analysis that we've already done and have, are looking at to do some more improvement of that signal as far as some striping and so forth. It, we're still evaluating, but that will come, come later. After construction, it, we just need to make sure that we're looking at the site distance for the entrances that's going in and making sure that proper grading, you know, on the edges, so the, the side view. Site distances are appropriate to the speed of traffic.
So Merrill, I have one more question. So let's say this is all approved and it all goes through and they build. Do you see any possible cost to the city coming up after this is developed or, you know, in the process of development?
Not that I'm seeing. Looking at the, the one road, might, it might be a public road coming in there that would have, however, how I state this, I've stated this in the past, but not for some of this council, it's interesting when you do residential development. They say when you start doing property taxes and so forth and they go, well, I pay all this property tax and that. Well, when you weigh all of that out, residential, single family residential does not pay for the services that is needed for police, fire, road, the maintenance and that you're bringing in. And at last, if I recall, the analysis that I looked at for Pocatello, for every dollar we bring in, we're probably expending close to $1.30 to $1.40 going out. So to answer that question that way, so if you were to have the higher density and the, the commercial, the, the offices and so forth, that are, they're taxed at a little bit higher rate and so forth, so that kind of offsets that. So, you know, go, go with what you, you feel on that, but that's the way that's laid out. So the more density, the less stress on the utilities and everything and the roadways and the more cost effective it is for the cities.
Any other questions while we've got Merrill? Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel, I declare the public hearing closed. This item is before you. How do you wish to proceed? I'd wonder what happened to my thing.
I didn't do it.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, based on the testimony we've heard this evening, I would move to uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of the rezone request from JG Ventures as outlined in Agenda Item Number Seven.
I'm going to second that. This is a
Okay, we have
Difficult decision.
We have a motion and a second. Apparently we have some more discussion amongst the council that needs to happen, so.
You know what? I like the development, but I don't like the, apparently what I'm looking at is not what it's going to be. And I, I, I'm struggling here on a decision as I look at it.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment on that? What we're looking at tonight is a rezoning. We're not looking at a plat.
Right.
We're not looking at a development. We're just looking at a rezoning. And I think we have to weigh that, this decision based solely on the rezoning issue.
But if we rezone it, I guess my question now is, is if we re, if, if we go ahead with that rezoning, then does a developer do what he wants to do there?
He still has to come back and meet, meet planning. They still have to
There has to be all the other steps that have to come before us or come before planning or, tonight is just the rezone consideration.
Yeah, but that is
Okay. So he does have some, they do, will have some responsibilities because of the way the motion was, was stated, that they will have to follow the recommendations of the planning and zoning staff and, and our staff has been adding input on that as well and so.
But I guess when I look at that, unless I'm looking at it wrong, right? We're looking at 96 units. Is that right? 96 units being built back there compared to if you just put on the back, on the backside towards the houses, 12, drops it down to 72 units. 96 units is a lot of units, three acres. And I, I guess when I look at it, I, I understand it. I understand the development. I also understand that what goes on in apartment complexes. And you don't control everything that goes on there. I, I understand that a neighborhood being worried about what's coming into the neighborhood. I understand that. And then that's, I guess, I thought it was reasonable if you looked at the back end of it and, and said 12, but it, that cuts it down, I mean, that cuts it down by 24 units. And apparently 24 units will keep it from getting developed. So I'm, I'm, I'm ready to vote. I, I just, I'm struggling with it.
Other discussion, counsel, this is your time. Okay, then, thank you very much. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marshan?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then we will make sure that the staff is on top of this when you develop and go from there. Thank you for, for coming tonight and for participating. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight is a short plat application, Portnoy View subdivision. Council may wish to approve a short plat application submitted by Adam Thayer of Diopra LLC to subdivide 3.09 acres more or less into four lots. The proposed subdivision is located northwest of the intersection between Highland Boulevard and Gwynn Drive. Staff finds the proposal compliant with applicable standards, with all applicable standards of Pocatello municipal code, with compliance, two conditions listed in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
We're still thinking.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the short plat application by Portnoy View subdivision as submitted by staff in compliance with the Pocatello municipal code as listed in Agenda Item Number Eight.
Second. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mangum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, final plat application, elevation 5,000, Division One. Council may wish to approve the final, approve a final plat application request by B Street Investments LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to subdivide 6.46 acres more or less into 24 townhome lots and one common lot for a total of 25 lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the primary preliminary plat application with conditions. I guess it's you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the final plat application by elevation 5,000, Division One, as recommended in the Planning and Zoning Commission application, as, as in Agenda Item Number Nine.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, bus conveyance acceptance from Idaho Transportation Department, public transit. Council may wish to accept staff recommendations and approve the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents for the conveyance of two, 2016 and 2017 Ford Eldorado cutaway buses from the Idaho Transportation Department, subject to legal department review. Staff anticipates the vehicles will be utilized for a minimum of five years. If approved, the buses would be used for system-wide fixed route and door-to-door services. There are no additional requirements for acceptance of the conveyance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question of our department head. How the devil did you get these? And are they going to require any kind of modifications, update, maintenance before you put them in service?
He's been strutting around for a while thinking, all right, I gotta just get them out, so.
It's close, so close. Skylar PB, Public Transit Director for the city of Pocatello. We've just gotten really good at trying to find these kind of buses. You know, in the public or in the, the bus industry and I think vehicle industry in general, it's getting really hard to find vehicles. Orders are getting canceled and so forth. Because we are a federal recipient of federal funds, those vehicles through transit agencies across Idaho, buses that are purchased with those federal funds, there's specific ties and things that happen with these buses. And so in Twin Falls, what happened there is there was a, a public transit agency there that the funding was changing and they did not want to move forward with the new funding procedures. And so they decided to close the doors. So the buses reverted back to the state because they were federally funded through the state. And so they became available and the, the meeting that I heard this in, I immediately emailed as soon as it was said and, and we got very fortunate to get two buses, the lowest mileage buses that were in the fleet that we were able to obtain. And so essentially because, again, because they are federally funded, they are able to be transferred to other entities like us that can be transferred with, with no cost.
Is there any cost to, do you have to do anything to them at all? Are they ready to go?
You know, we went over, we inspected them. Essentially, it's finishing taking off a strip, two strips on each side of the buses, the, you know, decal strips, putting our decals on, and they're ready to go.
Wow. Nice job. Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the bus conveyance acceptance from the Idaho Transportation Department for public transit, authorizing your signature if necessary after legal department review according to Agenda Item Number Ten.
Second. We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mangum. He beat you. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
I don't think he did, but.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Central Square Solutions Agreement Planning and Development Services. Council may wish to approve an agreement and purchase the Central Square Technology LLC as a valid sole source expenditure in the amount of $207,135 for community development software and services. The software will be utilized by multiple city departments.
Mr. Mayor? I move that we approve the Central Square Solutions Agreement and purchase as a valid sole source expenditure as outlined in Agenda Item Number Eleven.
Second.
I'm giving it to Marshan that time. I don't get too many seconds from, from him, so. Yeah, that was quiet. Now, he whispered that one, actually. We have a motion by Lyric and a second by Marshan. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lyric?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Twelve, Professional Services Agreement Task Order Number Four, Well Number Twenty-Two Replacement Water Department. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff and approve Task Order Number Four, Well Number Twenty-Two Replacement, under the existing on-call engineering services agreement between the city and Keller Associates in the amount of $144,100 and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funding for the project was established in the fiscal year 2023 budget. Councilwoman Lyric?
I move that we consider the recommendation of staff and approve Task Order Number Four, Well Twenty-Two Replacement, as outlined in Agenda Item Number Twelve, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. We have a motion by Lyric and a second by Mangum.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I gotta ask one question. I forgot to ask Justin earlier.
Justin.
If I may, please.
Absolutely.
When's this going to be online? Any idea yet? Timetable?
Yeah, Justin Armstrong, Water Superintendent. So our, our goal is to, once we receive the green light, to begin engineering for this, is to establish the bid documents for both Well Two and Well Twenty-Two and bid those items together. There were some cost savings by similar services in both of those task orders. It would save the city money by grouping those efforts since, since most likely we'll, we'll only receive one contractor to do that work, so. We anticipate that we'll begin drilling that hopefully in, in December and work towards construction soon after, so.
There was a, there was a timetable of construction that had days for different parts of the project. Were those additive or they all go back to day one? That, that was the part that had me a little confused about completion of the project.
Let me look through that, so.
See if I can find that again.
I'm looking at the same items.
Come on, machine. I'm getting the right project.
Yeah, so these, these dates would be congruent with Well Two. So bidding and construction of the well would be within 75 days of execution of the, the contract.
With the engineering firm or with the contractor?
Yes, with the engineering firm. And then, then we would come to you for recommendation to award the bid to a contractor and then that would kick off the timeline under that contract, so.
Super. Any other questions?
I just want to say thanks for putting those two together. I think that sounds really good.
Significant savings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Lyric and a second by Mangum. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lyric?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, Airport Lease Amendment Lease Agreement and Resolution. Council may wish to consider, consider the following for property at the airport. A, adopt a resolution and approve a lease amendment to the lease agreement with Pocatello TMX for property which, upon which they operate a motocross speedway with off-road motorcycle recreation and, and competitive activities. The talent would, the tenant would like to remove 1.79 acres of property from their lease premise or premise. The amendment would, will include the new property description and revised annual rental rate to reflect the reduction and other terms of the lease agreement will remain unchanged and if approved, B, adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement with East Idaho BMX for 4.53 acres of property for the purpose of constructing and operating a BMX track and hosting BMX practice and racing events. The lease will be for a five-year term at an annual rate, rental rate of $1,585.50 to be reviewed annually and increased by at least the amount of the CPI for the previous year.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the airport lease amendment lease agreement and resolutions as outlined in Items A and B of Agenda Item Number Thirteen.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen, Inordinance Establishing Pocatello, Pocatello Municipal Code, Chapter 1.04 Code, Chapter One Point Zero Four Point One Four Zero Authority to Enforce and Repealing Chapter Six Point Zero Four Point Zero Two Zero Authority to Enforce, Granting Enforcement Authority to Ordnance Enforcement Officers. Counsel, how do you wish to have this ordinance read? Counselmember Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham, I apologize, and a second by Councilmember Mingo. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham? Yes.
Mingo?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Rich, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. In ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation in Idaho, amending Title One, General Provision, as Title Six, animals, revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, more particularly by establishing Chapter One Point Zero Four Point One Four Zero Authority to enforce, and by repealing Chapter Six Point Zero Four Point Zero Two Zero Authority to enforce, granting enforcement authority to ordinance enforcement officers, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Mingo?
Yes.
Marshan?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes. Thank you. Agenda Item Fifteen is items from the audience. We do not have
anybody that signed up for this discussion item, and so, at this point, thank you, counsel, for your work tonight. That was not an easy meeting, but I appreciate your time. And with that, we are adjourned.